I have a flag.
It's behind the pole.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Okay, thank you all for coming tonight. I know it's nasty weather out there. In preparing for this meeting over the weekend, at the time, I felt I had some obligation to speak to or address the tragic situation in Connecticut. As I've thought about this, I'm sorry, I don't have the words to do this. There's nothing that I can say that in any way addresses the senseless horrific event that took place. So, instead of commenting, I just ask that if we could just take a minute or 30 seconds just to silently reflect, and then we will get on with our business. There were other items I needed to comment on. Julie, if you had some things that you wanted to mention or bring up? No?
Just this? No?
We can bring that up as another item.
As new business.
As new business.
Yeah, okay.
We will move on to item 6.0, to approve and amend the minutes of November 26. You'll all have those in your packet. Is there a motion to approve as written, so moved by Julie?
Seconded.
Seconded by David. Just take a minute to look those over. Anybody see any changes, any additions, permissions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please raise your hand. None opposed? Passes. Okay, item 7.0, adjustments to the agenda. Patrick, you said you had?
Yes, we have an overnight trip for Special Olympics. That would have to go under new business. And then, under 12.3, we're just going to pull that policy, which was going to go for a second reading tonight, but we just need a little bit more time on that one. And I think, under 17, Julie can touch on these when we go into our policy committee report, but we do have two or three, I think it's three new policies for our first reading tonight, under 17.0.
And we'll move that overnight trip to...
Somewhere else.
16.1. Did anyone else have any adjustments to the agenda? Julie has something, like to talk about that.
16.2.
We'll make it 16.2. This is a workshop. Okay. We'll move on to item 8.0, public session. This is a first of two. Anyone else? Okay. On to 9.0, staff reports. No staff reports. Okay, 10.0, committee reports. Begin with 10.1, Woolwich Building Committee. Patrick?
Yes, we're getting so close to the project's end, excuse me, that we didn't have Sabrina give you a nice colorful report anymore, but we're close to the punch list being completed. As you know, our biggest issue is the heat at Woolwich, and we've had numerous meetings, I've emailed you guys a couple different times to give you an update on the heat. We just had a meeting this morning at 10 o'clock, and all of our, all the people that needed to be there were there. The numbers of, number of rooms that have either been a little cold or a little hot, they've significantly reduced the numbers of those rooms that we're having issues with, but there are still a conference room, the kitchen, and one classroom right now that we've had some issues with being a little bit hot or a little bit cold. So, we've made, I think, significant progress. Over break, we'll be flushing the system again, and also putting in some filters into the strainers in the boiler room. I don't profess to be an expert on this at all, but our engineer, and Honeywell, and Warren Mechanical were there today, and the temperature trending information that we have on our computers now allows us to look at that, you know, every minute of the day to see which rooms we're having problems in. We made it very clear today that our expectation is that it's a brand-new building and we shouldn't be having these issues, and I think they understood that fully. So, when we come back in January, we don't expect to see any further problems, and obviously, if we do, we'll call another meeting and, you know, get to the bottom of it. But it was a very productive meeting today, and it tends to be the valves and the actuators in the heat that are causing the problems. So, sometimes the valves are open too much, or they're closed in certain areas, but again, I think we're, have made a lot of progress since the last board meeting. Any questions you have on Woolwich? Probably the only other, I would say, heat, and we're having some issues with the woodchip, not the boiler itself, but where the woodchips get delivered. Every time we get a delivery, we have a certain amount of them that don't go in, and, you know, we only have two maintenance people in the whole district, and so they're working on a new design to try to make that a little bit cleaner when somebody delivers the woodchips so that we don't have to spend our time cleaning up after these. So, those are the two biggest ones right now, and the state has been involved. We had a meeting last week with the state to put, also put a little pressure on these two issues.
Is the general contractor or the subcontractors, are they incurring the cost for these valves and the strainers?
Yes.
Okay, so it's no cost to the district?
Yeah, I think there is a little frustration on some people's part, sitting at the table today of, you know, you guys keep calling us, it's taking money away from our business, but it's, you know, it's under warranty, and we're going to keep calling, and they need to fix it, so.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Patrick on the Woolwich building? All right, we'll move on to Facilities Committee. Patrick, report on this.
Yeah, the Facilities Committee, we postponed our meeting, probably have one right after break, and the reason we did so was that Harriman Associates has gone around to our four elementary schools, the two in Bath, and then we have West Bath and Phippsburg. Those are the four elementary schools, and they've met with the principal and some key staff at each of our buildings to start to have the conversation about capacity versus square footage, what the space is being used for. So, it's just at its preliminary stages, and he will be coming back to talk with them further, and also, he has the blueprints for all of our schools, so it's just starting out, and so we postponed our Facilities Committee so that we can invite him to our next meeting to talk about that.
Okay.
Representative.
Yes.
Any questions for Patrick on facilities? We'll move on to 10.3, Finance Committee Report. Chet's not here, I guess I can give you a quick assessment. Bill, you were there, and Julie was there, so if I missed something... Yeah. At the last meeting, we basically addressed a couple of things. One, we had a gentleman, Lee Bragg, from one of the law firms that we use, come in and talk to us about the, what was involved in terms of borrowing money, if we needed to borrow some money for capital improvements, or we had specific projects that we wanted to look at, what were our options as a district, what's involved in that process, what are the pros and cons of different types of borrowing, whether you're borrowing through a state-led program, which he talked about, and he also talked about, I think there are private companies that bundle school money together that you can borrow from. We looked at, you know, just, we were sort of getting an overview of if we were in a position where we needed to borrow some money, whether it was for facilities or something along those lines, what's involved in it, is there a timeline, are there deadlines, that sort of thing. We also had a discussion about Schedule B positions. We had, we were supposed to have Peter call from the high school and Scott Walker, the athletic director, show up. Scott couldn't make it because he had a personal emergency, but we went through a lot of the, both athletic and non-athletic positions, those stipend positions, and really asked them hard questions about, you know, are these necessary positions with some of the athletic positions, how many kids are subscribed to these sports programs, and I think Peter did a great job in terms of presenting details about both the athletics and the non-athletics, and I think that will be an ongoing discussion within the Finance Committee as we get closer to the budget period, looking at those Schedule B positions and determining what are necessary and what are not necessary.
It sounded like some of them have evolved over a period of time since they were created.
Right.
Well, not necessarily yank them and throw them out, but maybe they some can be consolidated.
Yep, and we also heard where there are some needs.
Right.
Some of the sports programs that are highly subscribed to may have one coach, and they may need an assistant coach, whereas you have some programs that are not highly subscribed to that might not need an assistant coach. So, it was good for the board to get some insight into each one of those line items. You know, any one of those positions, they range anywhere from $500 to $5,000, and those are stipended positions, and it was good for us to be able to ask questions about that. I think our agenda for the next meeting is... Okay. We're going to be meeting with the auditor, and since Chet will no longer be on the board, we'll be electing a new committee chair. So, any other questions about what happened in Finance Committee? Okay. We'll move on to item 10.4, Policy Committee Report.
We met just last week. We reviewed a lot of policies, but you don't see them all tonight. We do see, she has a first reading, the video surveillance camera policy, which we never had, but yet we have video cameras in our schools, some of our schools. We have a child find policy, and animals in schools. We did have an old animals-in-school policy, which was very simple, I think half a page. This revised one has a lot of specifics as to which animals may be allowed, or, you know, of course, everything with the building principal's permission. I mean, some things are never, never, some animals would never be allowed in the school setting with kids. It also addresses cleaning up after animals, which the other policy never did. So, anyway, you'll see that. We actually did talk over once again the management of concussions and other head injuries, and it's almost ready. Almost. I think every month I say.
I know.
Next month we should, no, almost ready. It's had some reviews by the nurses in our district, as well as coaches. Anyway, so that's on its way soon. We also discussed a policy on student handbook and district handbooks, trying to bring consistency throughout our schools. We did not have time to review the trips policy, talking about field trips, but also, you know, other kind of trips that our school district goes on. Anyway, that's to be addressed next month. However, we did take, we did discuss one difference of this policy, this committee versus the other board committees, is that we have a community member on the policy committee, but trying to bring, this once again, consistency throughout our committees is filling out an interest in, you know, membership or committee member work on that, on that committee. So, I may be filling that out myself.
That'd be great.
Anyway. So, I think that's it. Our next, the Policy Committee will meet next, on January 10th, 7:15 in the morning.
Okay.
And that's it.
Any questions for Julie on policy? All right, we'll move on to Superintendent's Report. Patrick?
Yeah, first of all, I'd just like to thank Kim Gates. She does a lot for our school system, and she also, she coordinates, one thing she does is she coordinates the holiday fair for our K-5 students in Bath, and she organizes the whole thing, gets volunteers, families, staff to donate gifts, and then our K-5 students come in to Dyke Newell, and they can basically shop for a very small price, if nothing at all, for their family members. And so, Kim, you know, in a tough economy, you know, she has volunteers that help kids pick out gifts and helps them wrap, and people came in on Sundays, and I know there were a lot of parents, volunteers, firemen, policemen, a lot of people from the towns and the city that came and gave up their time last week, pretty much all day long, so that students and, you know, to see kindergarten students and first-grade students with those gifts that they can bring home to their families. So, I just wanted to thank Kim for all that she does for our district. Just a couple updates. Our middle school staffs at BMS in Woolwich, as well as high school staff, received some training last week on cyberbullying, and we had an author of a couple books come and talk to our staff, which is always a good thing to remind our staff with the technology that our students use nowadays, so everybody, I think, found very beneficial. Hopefully, you saw an article in the Portland Press Herald, I think it was a week ago, and we always try to cut and paste those and put them on our website, but we had a student, Caitlin Gonzalez, that was featured on an article of what we call Possibility U, Possibility University, and really, it's, you know, students sometimes think they can get into a college, and sometimes they're disappointed when they get the letter in the mail that they can't get into that college. This is kind of the opposite story, where you put your interest in, you put in your grades, your SAT scores, and in this case, for her, she thought that University of Vermont was kind of a reach for her, and by going through that process and that program through technology, she was able to really, to realize that it wasn't that much of a stretch for her, and is going to be going there next year. So, a lady in Freeport started the Possibility U, and we're able to afford it through Melmac grant funding that we have, so it's really proven to be successful here and also in the Freeport area, so. And, last but not least, I thought I would just ask one of our student reps to give an update on the debate team and how successful it's been so far this year, so I'll turn it over to Kyle.
Thank you. We've been off to a pretty good start this year. We've participated in six tournaments so far, Falmouth High School, Bangor High School, Edward Mill, Bates, Chevres in Poland. Individual performances have been strong across the board. Our novice public forum team of Emma Berkowitz and Christine Skroski has placed several times at tournaments. Mrs. Rice's son, David, has placed first in Junior Varsity Lincoln Douglas at Chevres. I've taken two second places, and Balt von Hewen, who presented last year about debate with me, his public forum partner, Alex, recently took, I think it was, third place in Varsity Public Forum Debate. So, there's, there have been a lot of strong individual performances, but more than that, and what I really wanted to emphasize was this guy right here. The last tournament, which was at Poland High School, is nicknamed the Nutcracker Invitational. The tradition every year is the awards that are given out are cute little nutcrackers like this, and this guy right here represents a second-place team finish for Morse High School collectively, meaning that all the individual accomplishments were summed up, and cumulatively, we took second place, which Mr. Bartlett said, he's our coach, he said that's the first time in our school's debate team's history that that's ever happened. So, we were, we were really happy about that, proud of that. And looking forward, we have three or four tournaments to go, Morana Cook, Brunswick. Brunswick hosts the state tournament, and then Poland High School, which is a national qualifier event, which I'm already set to go for. But, we're looking to do really well in states and hopefully, crack into the sweepstakes again like we did at Poland, with some strong individual performances combined. And we've had, our membership has gradually grown over the past three years. We've had as many as, I think, 18 kids at one meeting this year. We haven't been able to get everybody together for one tournament yet, just because they're on Saturday, and that represents a scheduling difficulty for a lot of kids, but we're really hoping, especially for the state tournament on January 26th, that we'll be able to get basically everyone who's come to our meeting so far together and put forth a really strong effort for Morse for that, and keep it up.
Great. Thank you, Kyle.
Mrs. Rice, who's the top debater at your home?
My 15-year-old son. No, and Kyle's a great mentor for the other kids, too, on the team. So, thank you, Kyle.
Congratulations, Kyle.
Thanks.
Doing great.
Any other questions for Patrick? Okay, we'll move on to item 11.2, Financial Report, and Ruth Moore from Central Office has volunteered tonight.
I assume you all have, what are the, what are in your packet, and I can ask if you have any questions, you're used to looking at these. I tried to address your request of having some encumbered items. All of the salaries and benefits for the rest of the year have been encumbered, and I've gone through and picked some of the major things that we know will be happening and added them to the different cost centers. You'll notice that we have issues in special ed, and I think that you all are aware of the main care issue that's going on right now, and this reflects that, and hopefully, we're still working on that, so hopefully, that looks better, maybe this next month. And we can also, you can also see that there may be some problems in transportation. When the budget was put together last year, fuel was rising, but has risen rapidly since that time, to a much higher level, and we are also transporting more special ed students than what we had anticipated at the time that the budget was put together, almost, I think, almost twice as many. So, those things just add up quickly. Some of these other things that do show balances, because we're under a spending freeze right now, there's very little encumbered, the supplies, and we're happy. It doesn't mean that we won't be spending it, but we've asked that they slow down, and so they're not doing purchase orders right at the moment, and we're hoping that they can get by with just as little as they possibly can. On the revenue side, at the time that I did this, I didn't know some information right now, but tuition rates have come in during the month of December, and it looks as though we could have a little more, maybe 70, 75,000 or so in excess tuition, if all students continue to come here and be planned on. And so, I don't know, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ruth?
I have a couple. Just one comment. I appreciate the new format because this really shows me exactly how much these different departments plan on spending, and it, in seeing that, it also kind of highlighted the situation we're facing with special education. Now, I know that you mentioned that this is a function of the main care situation, and we were made aware of that last board meeting. Is all of this shortfall, and again, we're talking 650,000, a little more, 660, is all of that a function of that?
Not all of it. Some of it is, we've had additional tuitions to that, that have added to this.
Is it new students to the district?
A couple of, I can think of one case where it has added, where we had to pay last year's tuition and this year's tuition, not budgeted, that, I think, that's 110,000 of that right there. And then, we've had additional students. We've had some, a couple of students that do not qualify for main care services, and they're receiving services that are very expensive, that were not budgeted for, because at the time, I was not aware, and has added a lot to it.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Ruth? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth.
Okay, we'll move on to Old Business, and we'll begin with item 12.1, which is Review of Board Goals. Specifically, this evening, I want to talk about the board retreat that we had. I know that it was brought to the attention of the board that we want to talk about priorities, so my question to you folks, I guess, is what's next? Where do we go from here, or what are your concerns as a result of that meeting?
Well, I found it fascinating to listen to the administrators. They all made excellent suggestions and observations, but what struck me in many of their remarks was the underlying theme of poverty and its impact on the learning and academic achievement of particularly our younger elementary school students. Obviously, we can't cure poverty, but I think we can do things, or I suspect we can do things in our schools that can mitigate the impact of poverty on students. The obvious one, and the one I think we've discussed and implemented to a significant degree is pre-K. We have, I believe, 91 children involved that I think we should make in the budgeting process, every effort to expand that to the maximum and get every child who's eligible involved. And also, I think we should give some real consideration to providing transportation, which in many instances is tied to the very issues that hamper a child's academic progress once they enter into kindergarten, begin their school career. And the other thing I feel is that we, as a group, as a board, should examine this issue a little more carefully, and look to ways that we can both gain information and perhaps insight into some of the things that we can do in our schools that will mitigate the impact and the long-term implications of what poverty does. impact and the long-term implications of what poverty does to younger-age children. I think that any group or subcommittee that we form should feel free to call upon our administrators, the classroom teachers, and anyone else in the community that can offer some insight and even go outside that, I think, to consult with people who have expertise in the field. Or alternatively, I think we can look at some schools that have effected real changes, substantive changes, and significant improvement. I think that a subcommittee of the board should be the place to start and I'd certainly ought to participate in that myself.
Mr. Chairman, one of the other issues, I think, Dave, and that was beautifully presented and I agree wholeheartedly, the issue of meals for youngsters who are having a difficult and families that are having a difficult time having an adequate breakfast and an adequate lunch because in some cases, it's all they receive, unfortunately. So, that ties into this whole package around the issue of poor kids in our school system and how we can mitigate some of the problems.
Thank you. Anyone else, comments?
I think we definitely, this needs to be part of the budgeting process and I, the thing that I was hopeful about when I listened to administration present is that there are some clear things that we can do, whether in terms of staffing or programming, that not only will impact those needy folks, but also will positively impact folks who are not so needy because you're taking the attention of a teacher who may be focusing on a handful of kids, who can now focus on the balance of the classroom because there might be somebody else there or another program that will help them. Bill, the point that you talk about in terms of providing meals, and I think that this is going to be a discussion, is the condition of our facilities and listening, not only having the ability to provide meals, but having the proper equipment to prepare meals because our kitchens are not in great shape.
Ms. Beal made that very point, I think.
Yeah. So, I think facilities...
Adequate personnel in some cases, not universally, but they could use some extra help in some of the schools.
Right.
It eliminated the hot breakfast in some areas because we, in our wisdom, last year's budget, cut back on staff a bit. So, this year, we need to take a long, hard look at the ramifications of that.
So, where do we go from here? I guess, that's the question I, you're suggesting forming a subcommittee. Would we maybe wait to get recommendations from administration as we get closer to budget time? Or would you be more inclined to form something immediately?
Well, I think that a group from the board could begin the task of gathering information, of speaking with our administrators and teachers. And I think with the imprimatur of the board itself, we sort of have a license, I suppose, to press the issue with them and make a subsequent report to the board as a whole.
Any thoughts on that, Patrick?
No, I think it's fine. We're meeting tomorrow morning, the administrative team, to further like a kind of a two-to-three year plan on the priorities that we've talked about. But, your issue is going to be a big part of that and I don't think it's a bad thing to start forming this, you know, sooner than later.
I'm in. My mouth, so, whatever, I'm in.
So, then perhaps we should wait to see what the outcome is of this meeting and then form a subcommittee that involves some members of the board shortly thereafter.
Yes.
And so, I've got Robin's name written down. David, did I put your name on this one?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, yeah. He's got a chair.
And again, I think that that discussion is going to really drive a lot of what happens with our budget discussions because that seems to be a common thread throughout the district.
I don't see this as completely an education problem. There are other agencies out there in the community that are dealing with this group of people. And I think we ought to break down the fences instead of protecting our turf and start working together as a common group. And maybe this group can initiate that, to bring in these other groups and let's start working together.
That's a good point because they may have some resources that we don't have.
Oh, yeah.
All right, great. Were there any other comments from that meeting?
I think it would be very good to see the administrators' three-year, you know, timeline. It would be very interesting to see how they would carry out their priorities.
Move on to some second readings of some policies. How are we doing on time? Item 12.2, second reading policy IMBB, exemption from required instruction. This is an action item. Is there a motion to approve as written?
Hello?
Painted by David, seconded by Bill.
The only thing I'll mention is on the last paragraph on page two, and this was just clarified recently, so I apologize for not sending it out to you. But, I think it was Tim that asked the question last time. So, I'll just read that first sentence for you. "When a student is exempted from any portion of the regular curriculum for religious reasons or sincere philosophical or moral beliefs, the staff will make reasonable efforts within the scope of these resources to accommodate alternative instruction for the student." So, it read differently last time and it made the question come up, you know, why keep, why is religious reasons separate? So, we did talk with main school management and reworded that to read this one.
Okay, so the coffee that I received in my packet says, it still says, for other than...
Right, and this is just reason, just, I mean, it was just earlier today when I talked to Charlie to try to clarify this.
So, we're approving...
Yeah, this one.
Your version.
Basically, if you look, if you look at the first page of the one that you have, you know, on the first page, it talks about, on the third paragraph, you know, it talks about it correctly because they should all be lumped in together.
Right.
And it should read similar on the second page, and so we fixed that.
Right.
So, it's not a major change at all, it's just including everything.
Okay. I'll void this one. Any other discussion on this policy? So, there's a motion to accept as written or as amended. All those in favor? The opposed? None? That one passes. Okay, we've polled item 12.3. We'll see that at the next meeting. Item 12.4, second reading of policy GCOC, evaluation of administrative staff. This is an action item. This is a small amendment. Is there a motion to accept as written?
So, move.
Moved by Alan, seconded by Julie. This just includes that language that provides the board with a report annually about...
Right.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? I think that one passes. Okay, on to new business. Item 13.1, personnel items. We have two retirements. Patrick?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I always send people a letter and go see them personally, but I would like to publicly recognize Margot Peterson, grade three teacher at Fisher Mitchell, has announced her retirement after eleven years in the district. And then Linda Lebec, physical education teacher at Morse and thirty-four years in the district. So, I just want to thank them both for their years of service to our issue one.
Thank you both. Okay, we will move on to item 14.0, cost-sharing proposal. We had the workshop earlier. This is an action item. Anyone like to make a motion?
I was just wondering, Kim, do we want to try to hold off a few minutes for Tim? Do we want to do these...
You mean for Chet?
For Chet, sorry.
Tim's still here.
Do 15.0 and 16.0, and then if he's still not here, we'll go ahead with 14.0? In fairness to Chet.
We can wait. I think there's a lot of people out here who are waiting to see what the vote is, but we can wait for Chet.
Well, I just thought that was...
Yeah, no, we probably should.
We have our people here for, if you want, to 15.
Okay. So, we will move this item down after item 16. Yeah, we'll move this to item 16.3. And I'm sorry to make you folks wait. Hopefully, he'll be back soon. Okay, item 15.0, approve proposed course for Morse High School Science Department. It's an action item, it's a marine science course proposal.
Yeah, this is something that we were trying to, around the middle of the year, is be organized, prepared for the following year. And, you know, we do have, I mean, Eric Barney's here. If you have questions, give Eric credit as well as, you know, the people that are here from the art department because the, I don't know that there was a format that we used before, but they both came in very well organized, give you a flavor for what we're going to be offering if you approve it tonight. So, I don't know if you have any questions, but if you do, they're here tonight.
I'd like to hear Eric make a presentation.
I got a question for you, Eric.
Yeah?
There you go.
What prompted you to generate this course?
Well, it was actually mostly the interest of the teacher, Mrs. Young, she's taught this class or similar class before, both of which she worked in, at Chonky and I believe in Richmond. We've had strong interest from the students as well for marine science, marine biology. We have a lot of kids who at least say they want to go into marine biology or ocean oka. We figured a lot of kids are going to pursue this course and a good start. Additionally, we do, we did have a botany class that Mr. Shaw taught, which was a semester elective. He's leaving after this year and so there's room in the schedule.
Are there any other questions for Eric? Julie?
Eric, I know that the ocean bowl is very popular for you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I'm glad that it can be tied to a course.
Yeah, yeah. We hope that those kids would use what they learn in the class to then go on to the ocean bowl. We won't make it a requirement, but I suspect that a lot of kids can take this, that class and then go to the ocean bowl. Additionally, a lot of kids do ocean bowl over and over again, so they may take this in one semester during, during their high school time, but then come back and do ocean bowl year after year.
Great. Any other questions for Eric?
What could be more appropriate for the shipbuilders?
Right.
They have to be studying the ocean. Eric, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Eric, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Okay, so, is there a motion to approve?
Sure.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Okay, passes.
And next, we have Ryan. Ryan and Constance are here to answer any questions you might have about an art elective that you have in your packet.
Do you want to come on up? Yeah.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Do you want to just give a quick reason why you're proposing this?
Sure. It's, well, it's an advanced-level ceramics course. I'm going to be teaching Ceramics I, which is an introductory level, 2D arts and 3D material, clay, which is an amazing substance. An advanced-level course will allow a higher level of production and a higher level of work from specific students who actually are engaged in that element and potentially could pursue that as a career. This is a fairly strong community also with its ties to craft and art stores and the potential for future in that area is very high. It would be a pretty selective group of students who require to prerequisite classes for that, which would be Art I, getting an introductory to the entire arts field, and then introductory, well, Ceramics I, which would lead you into that advanced curriculum course. And it would be, I think, it would be really beneficial for certain students who wanted to pursue art as a career.
And may I add that this has been in our course curriculum before, but then we had to drop the production and positions, art positions, we had to kind of pick and choose what we had. We did actually have another class that we also wanted to propose, but I think we'll juggle those, maybe we'll offer sculpture one year and we'll save that for the back room now. But, this has been a course that we've got before and very popular.
Are there any questions?
I don't.
Julie?
So, no new equipment you really need or what's the budget?
It would be very similar to the Ceramics I class. I expect the number to be slightly smaller as well. No new equipment, I believe we have.
We have the equipment and we've also taken away of, of course, the fibers and glass course, so that, fortunately, we had for that is we will...
Good, thank you.
Have you, with a course like this, I know you alluded to it, have you been able to tap into any of the public, you know, establishments, Georgetown or Rosick Pottery Sheepstool?
Actually, yeah, we recently just had our art auction last Thursday night and had a fairly strong support from local businesses and local arts and craft stores around the area.
And visiting artists come in as well.
Yeah.
Have that connection with the community.
Because it would be, you know, obviously, just a great resource to either, as a visiting artist, or maybe to help you out with materials, or maybe interest in things that you're producing, or a chance for students to see, as you said, there's great employment opportunities here for them to see how this would apply, so...
There's even mentoring opportunities for the kids, too.
We typically have some students who work at Georgetown Potter, you know.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
To approve?
To approve.
Okay. Seconded by Robin. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Unopposed? Passes. We'll move on to item 16.1, which is the approval of the overnight field trip. And I think that was in the packet, I mean, on the table. Do you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an annual trip that we make. It's for Special Olympics and we have three students going this year and two adult chaperones. And so, they leave on a Sunday and they stay up there and they come back on a Tuesday. So, it's, you know, reason to bring it to you because it isn't overnight, so, but it's not something new that we've done.
With this particular trip, do you ever set, has there ever been a set minimum number of students that you would do the trip for?
I don't think so. It's a good question, but I don't know the past history of it. I think we had a few more kids go last year. I think we might have five go last year, but...
And I didn't see, I mean, I'm looking here, there's five people, but it, there's no bus needed, isn't checked. Is there a bus needed? Is there a bus needed?
Vanning.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, so it isn't going to cost the district as much money, because obviously, it's a small group, but, so with equipment and everything else, a van can do it, but...
Okay. Are there any other questions for Patrick on this?
I do. So Patrick, with a budget freeze, this is still a beneficial trip to worthwhile.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, with a, with a budget freeze, what we try to do is, you know, any field trips that are, you know, like going to the Apple Orchard in Bowdoin, you know, we have said no to that. We've said no to some things that, you know, we normally would do. However, when it's a, like, for example, academic competition, we've got a lot of teams that go to math meets. You know, for me personally, that's where, you know, that's something that is the normal operations of the, of the school. I would see this as being a similar for these, for these students. Yeah, I mean, it's a competition of some sort that they really are looking forward to and be preparing for. But yeah, there are many field trips that, that we're saying no to.
Any other questions for Patrick on this? Is there a motion to approve by Bill? Is there a second? Seconded by Julie? Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Please raise your hand. None opposed? That passes. They do well. Okay, item 16.2, Julie had some information on a workshop that was presented to her. Do you want to...
Sure. Heidi Tucker from Access Health Communities Against Substance Abuse sent me a packet of material. It's actually, RSU School Board member, can attend at no cost. It's for two days, Wednesday and Thursday, full day, and the end of January, January 30th, Thursday, January 31st, 8:00 to 4:00 a.m. at Bowdoin. It's promoting, it's positive messaging training. It's put on by Communities Against Substance Abuse and Casco Bay CAN, C-A-N, partnering to bring trainers from the Most of Us in Montana to Maine to lead this training. There, they'll be guiding participants through a positive community norms model, and end the training with a discussion of how social norming can be applied at the school and community level. What you might gain from attending this two-day training, how to create messages and initiatives that can work to correct the misconception that most students drink alcohol they don't. Learn about community resources and ideas that can help all students, then brainstorm substance abuse prevention strategies with key leaders in communities struggling with the same issue. So it says promoting positive youth development in our communities. Attendees will learn the science of the positive, a transformational leadership framework to help youth overcome misperceptions and unhealthy behaviors and attitudes of their peers. So, I mean, I'll pass it around if you want it, but I only have one copy. It gives an outline of the, who's speaking, what, timing-wise. They're asking for a name to be submitted to them by tomorrow. And you can see on this list who these seats will be taken at no charge, and then tomorrow or after tomorrow, they'll open it up for people charging, who are willing to pay, I guess it usually goes about $600, willing to pay about $150 to a greater community member. So, do you want to see it all? Do you want to see this list?
Okay. So take a look at this. It would be a two-day commitment at the end of January. Patrick, you said you're attending?
Planning to, and I think we have some, I think Mr. Berkowitz is going as well, and possibly some local law enforcement people as well.
So if it was something that you were interested in, it would be at no cost to the district, and there is one slot open for a board member. So maybe get back to Julie...
Or I could give you this letter.
After the meeting.
Heidi.
Yep.
That's all.
Okay.
Great opportunity.
Okay, we will move on to 16.3, cost-sharing proposal. I don't think we can hold out for Chet any longer, unless you recommend we... No.
I have a motion to put forward, Tim.
Okay.
A motion that the formula, that the RSU moved to assigning costs on a per pupil basis to each community for the entire local appropriation, beginning fiscal year 2014. Subsidy from the state is credited to the community that earns it. Miscellaneous revenue, including debt service, is assigned to the district as a whole and is deducted before district per pupil cost is calculated.
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Did you say in 1415 or 1314?
No, right now, we're in fiscal year 13.
We're in 1213, right?
Which is called fiscal year. So I'm saying 201314. Implement this.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the formula, which is recommended on a cost-per-student basis for fiscal year 14. All those in favor of the motion? Please raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. So now we've got to get to work.
Sorry, I'm leaving you with that.
Thanks, Julie.
That's her parting gift, too.
You guys voted for it. Okay, we have some first readings, which were here. Which one do we want to start with?
Animals in school.
Okay. Do you want to talk about the animals in school policy, or nobody here's had a chance to really look at it?
Just it has a lot of details. If you went online and looked up the policy on animal schools, you'll see that that had nothing compared to this one. This has a lot of details. That's all.
Okay, we'll move on to the child find policy. Julie, can you speak a little bit about what this is about?
This is, the school district is responsible for locating and evaluating any student, any school-age student. So you're talking about age five to 20, if, to see if they are in need of special education and any support assistance. And then this is stipulating how they're identified.
This is an older, this is an older policy?
It's one that needed to be updated through Maine School Management and also Drummond Woodsom. So it's, it's really an update. It gets, you can see IEP instead of PET, and just some things that we need to be cognizant of.
It had been adopted, this, the other, the old policy was 2004.
Make sure you look closely at this one. There's a lot of red for next meeting. Okay, and the final one, video surveillance camera policy. This is a new one, you said?
New one. Patrick was surprised we didn't have one, yet we have in this district. Am I right, Patrick? Because we have videos.
There's a couple right in here, so, you know, here and at the middle school, we do have, and, you know, at some of our other schools, but mostly here and at the, at BMS, we, you know, we use cameras. And we should really be putting that in our handbooks, letting people know, as well as, you know, there should be at least one sign in each building, you know, letting people know that we're doing that. You know, so this policy explains why we'd be using it, as well as wherever those, wherever your computer is, where you can see what's going on in the camera, that should be hidden, and it should only be, you know, the principal or designee having access to that. And there's a lot of different things in here, and that, obviously, we would not be putting cameras in places where you would expect privacy within a school. So it just, it covers us. And it's something, just making it more transparent that, you know, we do have cameras, like many other school systems do.
Okay.
We discussed at the policy committee meeting that probably when the people come in the entrance of the school, there should be a notice.
All right, so read those over for next time. We'll be voting on those. How are we doing on time? We're good. Oh, we don't have, we don't change?
This is mine. No, we don't have to do anything.
We don't change the cassette, okay? I'm like waiting for them to change the cassette.
Make that TV timeout.
All right. We'll move on to item 18.0. This is our second public comment session. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Come on, Steve.
Then we will move on to setting our next meeting date and location. They're scheduled for January 28th at BMS. Does that still work for everyone? When is that workshop?
The next day.
The next day?
The next day.
28th? Okay.
30th and 31st.
30, 34.
Having this...
Maybe pass this down to those folks, so they can see the list.
I am just, I just want to add one other item, and Patrick and I didn't necessarily address this, and I meant to address it in my opening comments, but focused on something else. Before we adjourn, I just would like to thank Julie and thank Chet, who is not here, for all their years of service to the Board. I've served with both of them since the formation of the RSU, and it was Julie who persuaded me to be the chair, only if she would continue to be the vice chair. So she will no longer be the vice chair. So you're leaving me out there hanging in the wind, at least for another month. But thank you so much for your service to the district. You have really been an asset, so.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to item 20.0. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Right here.
Moved by Julie. Seconded by...
Too bad, but it's Chet.
Yeah.
Seconded by Chet.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of adjourn? Raise your hand. None opposed? Adjourn.